...of the United States of America and to be regarded for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to complying to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P.O. 1975, adequate notice of this meeting is provided in the following manner: The annual notice was forwarded to the Esberry Park Press, the Coaster and Star Ledger on December 18, 2013, and posted on the Wall of More the same day. All notices are in violation of the City's order.
May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker, one turn around?
Okay.
Oh, in favor?
Aye. Please come to the mic. You have three minutes to state your name and address, please.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The Chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and terminate any further comments.
My name is Anita Weiner. I live on Madison Avenue, Esberry Park, and I have a few, one or two statements and two or three questions. Number one, the, as I call it, the Barishlot Building on the corner of Cookman and Press Plaza is a menace to the society of Esberry Park. There's a broken window on Cookman Avenue that the bench that people complained about was taken away from. Now, I know a report was made by the police to somebody, but I don't understand, because last year we had an issue with a broken window, that the fire department had it boarded up with wood. Right now, it's not boarded at all, and you have zombie people coming by, you have downtown Cookman where people are eating in restaurants and galleries, and I don't understand how this is allowed to remain the eyesore and the danger that it is. So I'd like to know who's in charge of making sure that he takes care of the property in downtown Esberry. Number two, I'd like to know, I'd like an update on the cameras that were supposed to be placed either in public housing or around the community, and if they were installed and if they're in effect, and has lighting been put into the neighborhoods where people requested that there be street lighting for them? Has that kind of been accomplished? I think I sound like Pam. Just a good thing. Number three, could we have an update on the current shortfall that we owe to the State of New Jersey, placed on the website on a monthly basis, so we know how quickly we are getting to the place where we're going to get out of that monitoring? They've made sure, as I understand it, that we're under some sort of spending cap thing?
Transitionally.
Yeah, we have to beg for everything. So how close are we to getting out of that transitional aid?
Two point three million.
Two point three million?
Two point three.
Okay, and can we get that on the website in a monthly manner? And number, I just have a question. The Passion Building on the corner of Cookman, I'm not sure I understand how that's there. Nothing seems to be going on there. They don't, I don't know what they're selling, what it's doing. It's dark, like on for Saturday, people come into town, you have one giant, dark, void space. And is that building allowed to be there under the designation of, bottom floors have to be retail and upstairs can be residences? So I'd like an answer on that. Thank you very much.
You know what, Jack?
Oh, yeah, an answer to anything I've asked.
Jack, we know what we owe in transitional aid. Is there any way that you can give a timeframe and number of years that we might have some type of expectation when we off of transitional aid?
Well, I'd like to say, I'd like to state to continue to give us every year. It obviously goes directly to lower taxes. The city had a healthy surplus last year, and that's why our aid was reduced more than a million dollars. I would suggest it's still several years, perhaps three years before our revenues have increased, where we have additional property taxation and increased parking and beach and other miscellaneous revenues. If I could speak to Ms. Weiner about the lighting, there has been some additional lighting that has been installed. I don't know the exact locations. The public works, the city engineer mentioned it earlier this evening, with our CCTV cameras, there are approximately 54 cameras. There was a percerter that was issued today to report on how best to improve everything that is installed. And you mentioned the broken window on Cookman, but I'm not sure exactly where. I didn't catch that.
I have pictures, Mommy. She took pictures.
These pictures, you can pass that around to everybody, because I call it the Barishlot Building, but you must have called it something else before I got here, so.
The Lane's Farming.
Thank you. That's the building.
With the corner of Press Plaza.
Just walk down Cookman, you go to Press Plaza, go to where that pizza place was.
Okay, thank you.
It's pretty easy to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just, could I just say something real quick about the, you mentioned the money we get from the State, that's transitional aid. Every town in Birmingham City in the State gets aid. Certain towns get some more aid, it's called transitional aid. We used to be just over 12 million dollars. We're down to two point three. And I agree with what you said. We gotta get off of it, one way or another, because until then, we're still under their thumb. See, that's something people don't realize. Until we're out from under that, they can dictate us about raising our taxes and several other things that can run in this city. Thank you very much for saying something.
The only thing, I was gonna follow up with, Jack, that would be the new head of codes job with the broken glass, right?
Yes, and I will forward these pictures.
And to add on to the streetlights, I had multiple people requesting streetlights in alleyways, and I know at least two of those alleyways got them. So I'm not sure how many total alleyways, but I know two got them because they followed back up. And then even, we can put the two point three million on the website, but it doesn't change per month. It's usually a number that comes around the end of the budget, in my one year on. It's the number that comes around at the end. So it's just, I mean, we can put two point three, but it's not gonna change next, it won't change again until next year.
Oh, and the Passion Building, you're right, they got around, they are a advertising, they're group, event handling, and they got around having their place, they're having a retail office on the first floor. But you're right, I never see any sales going on there either. So I honestly have to tell you, I don't know. And yes, well, we're gonna, yeah, we'll check it out again. And I think Barbara, then, might have something to say about that also. But thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stanley Conover. I reside at 1012 Fifth Avenue, out of the Park of New Jersey. Answer to a question about the streetlights, I did put in a request on the tail end of Fifth Avenue, there's an alleyway, we did receive our lights, we received the paper of the alleyway. As far as the cameras, I have no idea whether they were put in by now, but however, I want to thank Robert for pushing it. I want to thank the City Council. Most and foremost, when I come home at night, sometimes it's 12 or 1 o'clock in the morning, because I do a lot of outreach, I can see clearly, and I really appreciate that. My wife sent her a cadeau, I mean, a hut that was also, but you know, we thought it was gonna be a sad sight there, because it was so dark at nights, and people running back and forth in the alleyway. But I'm really glad that it's been taken care of. And I hope to continue to good work in the city, and remember, election time is coming up. I remember them who will remember me.
Thank you.
Lori Ross, West Side Community Center, Y-15, Dwood Avenue. I'm glad that there has been some success with lights and cameras and things of that nature. Again, I say for the, I guess, 50th time, the area around the West Side Community Center, and particular areas on Elizabeth Avenue, Dwood, and throughout that section of the town, it's inadequate lighting, and we certainly need cameras. Again, I will say, for the 100th time, we are under siege. I know, Councilman Moore, you're talking about Springwood Avenue Park. I think that when you have other facilities that are in dire need of help, that should be a priority. I think that with the call for ratables and to increase the city's revenue, to develop a park with a million dollars just seems a bit obscene. And again, I am going to also remember those who have made promises. When you have a couple of department heads here talking about snow plowing and all things of that nature, why doesn't the city take a real, honest effort at hiring city residents for these jobs? Everybody knows that the unemployment rate in Esberry Park in particular rivals the state and probably the nation. And there really should be a council that's gonna actually help residents get jobs, that instead of having so many issues about moving, it's my neighbor. They'll move. Communication, having the community members. But again, there's inadequate lighting, there is at least one house behind the West Side Community Center that the police have had a number of calls. These absentee landlords rent these homes, particularly this home, and we've had busted windows in the last couple of months, and nothing is, we don't get any relief. What we get is, as I've said before, code enforcement violations. So I'd like to know from this council, everybody's an incumbent, what are they gonna do to help the area in and around the West Side Community Center, the West Side of Esberry, and instead of talking the talk, I'm glad this gentleman got a light on his street, but we have a whole section. I want to know what these incumbents are gonna do about helping this particular area. Again, a million dollars for a new park, Springwood Park, and it's all about, in my opinion, all about the new, and forget about the old. The center itself has been in existence since 1942, and we still have open permits from the last work. So again, we're under siege, there's crime, the police knows, they know exactly which houses are the problem houses. When are we gonna have some enforcement on these slum landlords, and when are we gonna get some relief? So I'm gonna wait for anybody to answer.
I could answer that, Barbara.
Go ahead, answer, Barbara.
All right, one of the things, I have to agree with the lighting. If we need lights there, we've actually got to look into and put lights up. And as far as code enforcement goes, we can send them there anytime to enforce what's going on over there. The thing about the park, remember, that's dedicated funds. That's money that was set aside specifically for the park. It can't be used for any other thing. That's money that we got from the county. So if we tell them we don't want it, we want to use for something else, they're gonna say, well, no, this is for parks, another town or another area will own a park, and they can have the money. So that's why the money's being used for that.
Well, I thought my understanding was it was great green acres funds, which goes for recreation, open space, which is the West Side Community Center, is open space. There are other dilapidated park areas in the West Side. Perhaps there needs to be a prioritization of the existing before we build new, when you can use that lot for ratables.
I, you know, I want to mention one thing to you. You can sit down here if you want to, you can stand, doesn't matter. But I'm on the Quality of Life Committee, and we are looking at the abandoned properties and plan on, as we go down the road, to take care of some of the absentee landlords, some slum landlords, some of the properties that are, have been abandoned and should be torn down.
I just want to say this, and I know I don't have any time, but a resident on the Elizabeth Avenue property literally took their hand and put it through the, the whole window.
Thank you. Next.
Let me just say, because you said Councilman Moore, I did bring up the park, because it's been four years of planning. That's four years before I was up here. I mean, they got three years in a row, $250,000 from the county for a specific purpose, the park. It cannot be used for the West Side Community Center. That's what the city applied for in the past, and that's where the money's dedicated to. I cannot change that. So let's just be factual.
Okay, next.
Dewayne Small, 1304 Madison Avenue, Democratic Representative for the 3rd District. We get $3 million in state aid, am I correct, LaFredo?
Well, you have more than that. We get 2.3 in transitional aid. That was the discussion that was being made.
Okay. I feel that if they're giving us such little bit of money, they shouldn't have 100%, 100% control of our budget. I think we need to do away with that and deal with the cuts wherever they have to be. Let's face the fact, we gotta make some hard and tough decisions, and I'm quite sure a few of y'all up there agree with me. Now, as far as the Michaels Group, we want to see development, but we want to see development that favors the resident. You've got 64 units being built. Out of those 64 units, 39 are one bedrooms? I don't speak, I don't think that speaks towards family, to family. If you ask me, it speaks towards decreasing the population. Let's be real about it. That does not speak to family, one bedrooms. 39 out of 64? That's more than half. And when we talking about these cameras, we just spent, and I think it was 2012, a lot of money on them cameras on Lake Avenue, and they are not working? Who put them cameras up, and what was the requirement of the contract? Before we go spend some money, let's see if whoever put them cameras up did the right thing. Before we go take some money from the CDBG, or whatever, whatever we're gonna take it from, or whatever fund you're gonna take it from, we need to look at that and see if the requirements of that contract are met. Because I don't think anybody in their right mind will go give up that amount of money to pay for some cameras that don't work, that don't record. Something wrong with that. Not in two, not in, not in two, in the year 2015, 2012, 2014. We can't live with that. So let's bring that contract back up, and let's look at it, and let's see what the requirements were. Because we got a lot of cameras out there that we pay some money for. And I'm depending on y'all, council, do the right thing for the people. Don't let's spend, don't spend the wrong thing.
Jack, could you give us an update on the cameras, especially on the West Side?
There were two different installations, from what I understand, on the cameras, two different companies. I don't know exactly when the cameras were installed. From what I understand, they were installed in multiple phases, with two separate vendors. And there, the systems have been plagued for some time. So the percerter that was released today by the Finance Department is to hire an independent company, come in and analyze where the problems are.
Do we have any timeline as to when that will be done?
Two weeks.
And then where do we proceed afterwards?
Based on their recommendation, we'll review the recommendations and move forward with the money that's set aside.
How much has been set aside?
$250,000.
Thank you.
Mayor, was there, was there a warranty on those cameras that was installed before? I think we need to find that out before we pay somebody to come in here and take a look and find out what the problem is.
Totally agree. Jack, can we look into that? I would think that, I would think it already has been, I would hope.
Yes, depends on when they were installed. I'd like to talk about the housing for a second. The new housing that's going up is not decreasing any housing, it's actually increasing affordable housing in the city. So I don't know where this decreasing would come from. And, you know, a lot of the housing that is built is geared toward families. So what happens to singles and couples of low income who need housing? That's all that this is helping to cure. Thank you.
Next.
I just want to say one, Rita Moran, O8 Avenue. About the Michaels Group, they didn't even buy the land yet, and you're gonna pass a resolution tonight? Nobody knows how much that land's gonna cost? We own the land. Don't you think you ought to find out first if they're gonna buy the land? The other thing is, I'd like to know if the final report came in on the pilot programs that brought it. Mr. Kelly?
We.
I'd like to know who, who is responsible, who is accountable for the mishap of not collecting all the money on the pilot programs? And I'd like a name, if possible. And the other thing, if we collected all the money that was due us, like the mercantile license, nobody gets fired around here. They don't do their job, and then they don't get fired. You give it to somebody else. Now, somebody else is gonna do the mercantile license. And that person, I have a lot of questions about that person that's gonna be doing that too, but I wouldn't mention any names. So, could I have the final report on the pilot program, and a name, and who's gonna be responsible for the default?
Sure, we can provide you that information.
I didn't hear you.
I said, sure, we can provide you with that information. When you say a report on the pilots, there is not one separate report. There is a write-up on each individual pilot, which I can forward you those emails.
When can I get that?
Provide me your email address tonight, and I'll forward it to you tomorrow.
No, I'd like to hold it, come on.
That's five cents a page.
Twenty. I'll pay my dues.
What about the other thing, about the Michaels Corporation buying the property? They're getting everything for nothing so far.
The Michaels Group is going to be paying $640,000, $10,000 a unit. It's approximately $120,000 more than the property is assessed for.
What is that? What, I mean, what does that go under, what is that, a tax, or they're gonna buy the property, or what?
They're gonna be purchasing the property from the city for $640,000.
Okay.
Which equates to $10,000 a unit, and that is approximately $120,000 more than the property is currently assessed for.
Have they come up with any money?
They won't come up with any money until they are awarded the tax credits. I mean, we won't have any construction unless they are awarded the tax credit financing. So this is all contingent on the tax credit financing, and they have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars just to get to this point.
And in the report you're gonna give me, will it be a name and a person that's gonna be accountable for all of this, all these mistakes?
I think you're out of time.
Well, we want to know, though.
Next.
Hello, Council, Jerry Scranton, Long Island, Jersey. First of all, I believe you all were proud of the council, and I'm glad to see that Amy Meyer and John Moore are running again. But I get them even more glad that Sue, the true model of John LaFredo, is not running again. Okay. But I want to say, though, I thought it was very funny. But anyway, Meyer, you quoted in a paper, and I think you did a very good quote, saying that we need to change the way things are done in the past. We have to change, new ideas. I've been asking for over two months, and I want to hear what the council had to say about this, been asking, when are we getting time clock? I've been stonewalled, just like we were stonewalled about the names. I think that's the same practice that we got from the last city manager. I also suggested professional companies use bi-weekly planning, and then come up with a monthly report. Have any of you seen a monthly report from any of the department heads? Have any of you? I'll take that as a no. Okay, I heard and saw a copy of a letter being circulated around City Hall about some stuff that may, may not be known about the city. Do any of you, I know you guys have a copy. Are you guys reacting to the letter, or that would be another private matter? There are a lot of things mentioned in that. I would like an answer to that. Then, John and Sue, you were responsible when they were doing the tax evasion, but you don't know who was not responsible for collecting the money from Saksman. Who was responsible for that? Then, also, we've been told the new people are to be paying their fair share for, under the new pilot program, for the $50,000 for the interstructure bond. But no matter how we cut it, they may pay 100% tax, but I thought it would be baited 40%. So that means they're paying 60%, and those taxpayers and the state will pick up the tab. Will that make that clear? The city's being short-changed. And I'm delighted you guys have some answers. I have 44 seconds to go, and I'll wait for an answer.
You know what, Jerry, sometimes, and I probably should not address this when I am, sometimes it's better not to talk, but I will say this, in response to the letter you're talking about, it was an anonymous letter, and I don't know how many in here remember the McCarthy era. In touring the McCarthy era, there were any number of people, actresses, actors, musicians, that lost their living because of allegedly being associated or having done something, in many cases that was not true. Whoever wrote the letter, if they sent to the prosecutor's office, it's up to the prosecutor. We are not an investigative body up here. And I caution everyone, because there's always words that are put out there about individuals that may or may not be true.
I totally agree with you.
So that's the only thing I have to say about that letter.
Yeah, what about the time clock, and the thing that you were saying about changing, we have to change the way we do business?
It's in the paper. Hey, buy the Esberry Park Press?
No, no, my question with the time clock, will we get any?
I totally agree with you. I ask the question every month that I'm told, maybe by December, maybe by December, maybe by December, which is, just blows me away too. I agree with you.
And what about monthly report? You all have had a blank look on your face. I think most towns get monthly reports from the department heads. They're trying to help you. This is a new action here.
They were done away with years ago, wrongfully so, I would say. When I worked for the city, we made a monthly report, never been made a monthly report. Who stopped it? I don't know, but it's not happening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jerry.
Hello, Council, Lady Norman, 1304 Avenue. I know that there is really a minority here in Esberry Park, and I look at, and I look at West Side, and I see that not a lot of things are happening right for us, and I think the park is really daffy. I know that the entrance to the market that's all around Lake Avenue, why would they put a park there? What is the need for a park? I thought it was supposed to be, they go commercial. I say that everything that was commercial on Lake Avenue is now wrong. And the one thing that they did put there that's commercial, it's, might be sometimes commercial, but it doesn't deal with the market that's surrounding it. If I went to buy their shoes, I'd probably go to the mall. Store, I could go speak Spanish. Whatever happened to, you know, having a market for the people that's in the area? I mean, a park? I mean, even the city knows that you can't get no ratables from a park. I mean, looking at the fact that a lot of people are out of work, it would be that, hey, it'd be maybe nice to be, put some commercial there, maybe they might get a job in their own city. I don't know if that, that comes in, you know, into perspective. I mean, if you look at that, you think, hey, maybe, maybe we can do something for these folks over here. Maybe we can bring some momentum in, in areas where there's very low income. I'm sure that somebody will be working in that park? Well, I hope so. At least one job. Thank you.
Well, all I can say is this, the park is something that was planted years ago. It was in conjunction with everything else that was supposed to happen down there. The city is not spending the money on that park. That was money that was offered to us, and we had meetings with the community, and they said they'd like a park. And plus all the other plans that are being done. That was part of the Springwood Avenue Community Plan also, was to have a park there. So I don't know what this, this thing is, that the city's putting a park, but then use the money for something else. The fact of the matter is, we can't use the money for something. The fact of the matter is, we can't use the money for something.
Everybody's willing to sit with you now. Because the park is a very, very, very important place. You go put a commercial there, you get money.
Somebody has to be willing to build a commercial property. Somebody has to- Is there anybody? Are you kidding? Yes, we asked, we've been waiting for four years.
Move them all over the county.
We've been asking, asking for four years. We finally have somebody that's willing to come in here and do something. The Michaels Group is not the first person to have entertained, having come in here and doing a project. There were other people that came in, it was maybe impossible for them to do anything because the community wanted something else. So, we're presenting a plan, and it was something that came up.
So sad.
People are under pressure today. The first thing that we put back in our state, and the problem is to value to that state. Thank you.
Tell me about it.
You know, what, let's just make one other statement in regards to that. I've been meeting with some individuals, not comparing jobs, jobs, jobs. And everybody knows that nationwide, there are shortage of jobs depending upon skill level. However, the individuals that I will bring in here, and we will be having a workshop, is gonna deal with micro businesses. And so, for those people that are interested in going out, or already have businesses and need additional funding, that is one of the ways that we create jobs. Thank you.
Next?
Arnold Fall River, Asbury Park. First, Mr. Alfredo and Ms. Henderson, I'm really sorry to see you guys leave. You've given the city a great few years, and you've done a wonderful job. That's number one. Number two, Mark Kidman deserves every single penny that we're gonna give him for putting up with the people in this city. Number three, can somebody explain to me how community development block grant funds work? How, who determines who gets the money? Is there any oversight?
No.
You know, I need to know that. On the park, the park's a great thing, but, you know, it's been since 2009. I agree with Councilman Moore, this is crazy. This is crazy. Where are we gonna get the upfront money? That's the next question. Because we gotta front the money before the county reimburses us. Where's that going to come from?
Alfredo knows.
Last but not least, we have, we're trying to put a list of local contractors together, and we're asking iStar and Madison Marquette for their input?
Disgraceful.
What's that all about? I have a copy of the list. There's Red Asbury Park Company on it, and that's Mr. Dwayne Smalls. So, we've done a great job putting together a list of local labor. She should be fired. And then, the last thing is, you have to give credit to the Chamber of Commerce. They have brought in numerous things this year. They have gotten rid of the patching group to run the Oyster Fest, they're doing it in-house. They really do a wonderful job. And the nice part about the Chamber is they hire local guys. They hire local labor. They know who to list, they know who to call, and where to get people to help them out. We gotta, we, oh, and the cameras, real quick, Mr. Kelly, I can fit in on the cameras. The cameras were paid for by community development block grant funds. They were installed in 2013, and we need to know where the warranties are, including the cameras in Bradley, in the park at First and Grand. There's cameras there, but they don't work. So, all it takes is one phone call to finance to find out about all this. It doesn't take six or seven meetings. Let's get on the stick. We're wasting money every single day. Let's do what we gotta do. Let's get the park done. I don't care if Joe Coon goes over there and sticks a shovel in the ground. He's gotta show people that we're doing something. Thank you. And can I just get a couple of answers? Anybody?
Community affairs, Mark Whitehead.
Any questions?
I still got a question.
No, I'm sorry.
I forgot the questions, Arnold.
Okay, well, the community development block grant fund. Who handles that? Is there any oversight? Who signs the checks? Call me disgruntled, I don't care.
We have an individual who works on, running the program. Community meetings are held, and it is decided among the city departments and different community organizations on what the best means of the city would be. Those meetings are advertised, the list is advertised, and the city council basically approves a budget for the year, identifying those projects, which is subsequently sent to the state federal government.
Okay, are we still working off the 2013 funds that we haven't spent yet?
Well, there are some surplus 2013 funds, a modest amount, that need to be reprogrammed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
What about the, I'm sorry, why are we handling iStar, Madison Marquette? Ask you, then, who they want on the list for local labor? What's that about?
We didn't ask them who they want on the list. We prepared a list as exhaustive as we knew how to prepare a list. We shared that list with iStar and Madison Marquette to see if they had any other local vendors that we may not have had on our list.
Next?
Thank you.
Just got a couple of questions. And I just wanna know where you-
Please say your name and address.
My name is Kevin Saunders. I reside at 109 Ridge Avenue in the city. I just got a couple of questions. I, we don't determine quality of life around so much. I, when I bought my house, about eight years ago now, I wanted to do some work on it. I had to go through the zoning board, come back four or five times, pay the city engineer to tell me what I can and cannot do. I wanted, the only thing I, the only thing I wanted to do at that point was to make my house look halfway decent and just live it. Since that time, I've done the work, I've done everything else but than living in my home. On the corner of my block, there are two eyesores. There are actually three houses that are eyesores. There's one on Springwood, on the Springwood side, then there's one on the corner, and then there's a gray house that's, that's right next to my property. In the back of that house, there's almost a forest growing. Since I bought my house, there's also been some good things that happened. You have the charter school across the street, and you've got the St. Peter Clair community system. But on the corner, no one has addressed those issues. I went to code enforcement, I went to the city management board, and no one has addressed it. Those buildings are a danger, and eyesore to our community. It, the quality of life issue is, no one has addressed that issue with those properties. Now, who did I speak to about that?
One of the things that we did was hire a head of code that is also an attorney. So, there's something called the Abandoned Property Act. They move on properties quicker, but it requires you to go through a court process. So, what I will say is that one thing this council did do is get somebody to be the head of code that we believe is going to be able to move on these properties and will have an area or level of expertise that will allow us to move on properties that you're talking about at a much faster rate. Granted, he started about three weeks ago, or four weeks ago, but, but you want, you're, these properties that you're talking about are absolutely a priority to get fixed up, fine or sold.
I understand, but it's been over eight years now.
We've had a priority-
It is their improvement, yes. Just give us the address of the property. It's 105 Ridge. It's 105 Ridge, and it's the corner, and it's the house that's on the corner of Springwood and Ridge. I'm not sure if it's considered Ridge or, or-
Across the street, Mr. Pizza?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, you guys just drive by and see.
And you'll see my house next to that Ridge. I was supposed to do things that I didn't want to do, but the house looks happy and decent. But the point that I'm trying to make is, if we're, if we're improving our city, those type of eyesores, Springwood Avenue is a main artery into our city, and people see those type of houses. We don't wanna, we don't want people to see that, those type of eyesores in our community.
Let me add a bit to that. There was some legislation passed, and anybody doing just a minimal amount of work, and I think the property you're talking about has not yet worked done on it, was able to get an extension to continue to try to improve the property. If you talk to George Seela, he'll give you some information about that. He's in the construction department, oh, no, wait, construction department.
He's in construction and business.
And this legislation is supposed to expire at the end of this year, which will make it easier for cities to take actions. This is just a very long, arduous process. The Community Action Network, Mr. Kelly, it was about three months ago, three, four months ago, took a tour of the city. That property definitely was on the list, along with some others. And so, they will be targeted when the funding can come about, and one of the newer programs comes into place, to try to not only demolish them, but also possibly to get developers to build new homes on those spots.
I understand that, but the problem still remains that people are living in these properties, and then they're being reborn, and it's something to me, and my family, and my tenants that live in the apartment.
Do me a favor. Every time you see somebody in that building or something wrong, call code, call code enforcement, and I know you have, but make a list of the dates and the time you called and, for your own records. And then get up to the man and say, "I've called there five, 10, 15 times, and nothing's been done."
I agree with Mr. Saunders, that's a great, I mean-
Well, I support that he's called. He's already said he has called, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
It's like, and I agree with, I agree with Armin and Ellen. I mean, they've gone 10 years with the dumpster. It's like, everything in this town, put it over here, make people forget about it. We're not proactive, we're not even reactive, and that's typical. I mean, nine years, 10 years, 12 years. I mean, it's, it goes on and on. We went on that bus tour. We went by a house that had a TV on the roof. Well, three months later, the TV's still on the roof. The code department saw it. It was embarrassing, a bust trip. When city officials said, "Well, we can't find out who owns that house." And Pat Durkin was there, and Pat Durkin monitored, like, he business talked, saying, "What do you mean, you can't find out who owns it?" I mean, everybody can find out who owns it. We make excuses. We can't sit up here and sugarcoat things. We have problems, and we have to address them. And we can't go every meeting and say, "Thank you, people on code. Thank you, people on call. The dumpster people, thank you." 10 years, 12 years, 15 years. And it goes by quickly. So, I totally agree, I totally agree that we're not even reactive. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilwoman Shelton. I'm here at 126 Avenue, Danford. But I'm here this evening not with a resident or comment or question. I'm here only to just thank the city for partnering with Prevention First. I am a deputy community support program project director, and the city is coordinating with us to have a town hall meeting here in this room on Thursday, September 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00. It's called the Community Conversation, and it's regarding prescription medication issues. We have, the format will be a panel discussion. We have local, matter of fact, pharmacists from our own, what's it, Home Drugs, who's coming in to be part of that panel. And anybody, most of our residents who does, do use that drug source, he's gonna be part of the panel. I just ask that flyers will be coming out, but I ask that everyone please attend and support this event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilwoman Paul McEvoy of Interfaith Neighbors. I'm here tonight to thank the council for their support, and city administration for their support for our Coola Cafe Hospitality Training Program. And I'd also like to shed at least a little light on how some of these community development block grant monies are used. In our case, Interfaith Neighbors, we responded to a city-issued RFP for proposals for workforce development or workforce training programs that were to be funded at least in part by community development block grant monies. Responded to that RFP, and we were awarded a grant from the city using community development block grant monies to partially subsidize the hospitality training program that we run for the Coola Cafe. Coola Cafe is located in the Springwood Center Building. It's a community cafe, it's open to the public. I describe it as good food, reasonably priced, and attentive service. Because at its heart, it's a training program for local residents, for jobs in the hospitality industry. So, so that you can be confident that you're getting some value from those community development block grant monies that have been awarded for this particular training program, I'd like to share some of the results of that training program with you. The cafe has been open since April of 2013, that's 18 months. It's a relatively small hospitality training program. In those 18 months, we have had 31 participants trained. Of those 31 participants, 18 have been successfully placed in hospitality-related jobs. Six have obtained full-time employment outside the hospitality industry. 10, two people, I'm sorry, three additional of those participants have returned to either full-time GED programs or academic programs. And four or five participants have had to leave the program, either because they lost their housing, or because they violated some aspect of the program. So, of those 31 people who have been trained, in those 18 months, we have 27 that are full-time employees. Okay? So, I think we have pretty good proof of concept in terms of this hospitality training program. In fact, the program is going to be recognized at this year's Governor's Housing and Economic Development Conference with the Public, reading Public Private Economic Development Award. And I'd also like to say to the members of the community here, that when you come to the cafe, you are supporting these young people who are training for jobs. The only reason, the only way the cafe can stay open is if we get some patrons to come in and frequent the cafe. So, when you come for good food, reasonably priced, and attentive service, you are supporting this hospitality training program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Cadle, 522 Deal Lake Drive in Asbury Park. I would like to talk to the council for just a moment, and the public as long as they're here, and announce that within a week, APTV will be announcing two candidates forums, one for the municipal election, one for the Board of Education election. We will also be videotaping and broadcasting Board of Education meetings from now through the end of the year. We can be found on FiOS, Verizon FiOS, channels 28 and 30, and Cablevision Optimum, channel 77, and 116. I also wanna say that I had a wonderful meal yesterday at Coola Cafe, met a great young man named Jamal, and the food was terrific. Join myself, I invite you all to go visit the Coola Cafe. Thank you.
You just phone yourself?
Yes.
You wrote the call, is that- On paper, we are on to item 6 on the agenda, approval of minutes, both 20 minutes.
Moving.
Second. Councilor number 3.
Yes.
Councilor number 1.
Yes.
Councilor number 2.
Yes.
Second, Mayor Henry. First, Dave Dins. Yes. I will see, I will see, a bill reservation? I have some bill reservations, one of 1,651, 1,651. Thank you.
Moving.
Second.
Question. There's two purchase orders I give them. I have no problem with the Asbury, but before the checks are mailed out, I'd like to be able to go through them tomorrow or here, something, because there's a questionable building in my mind. There's a purchase order, 14-02295, 58754, and first order, 14-02431, for 795532, going to McManus, Gottlieb, and Calvin. Just because, I mean, they're charging us to research the UEC, and the UEC has been out of order for these for five years. So, I'd like to review this bill, if it's tomorrow possible, before the checks are mailed out. So, I'd like to review this building if you are possible to start, before the checks are sent out. Thank you.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes, I see from the associate community society of the board of bill.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
I have a, under application, I have a catering permit from 1411 St. Lee Street, Outwelling, with the approval by the police department.
Second. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, I have an application for a catering permit for AP 30 Property Holdings LLC with approval from the police department.
Moving.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Under applications, I also have special events as outlined during the work sessions from Alicia Floyd.
Moving.
Second. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
We are on to resolutions. A resolution in support of efforts of Interfaith Neighbors Inc. to obtain funds from Monmouth County Community Development Office for a project to construct affordable housing units.
Moving.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Esberry Park designating the Michael's Development Company as redeveloper of certain parcels located within the city's Springwood Avenue redevelopment area, and approving a redeveloper agreement by and between the city and Michael's Development Company.
Moving.
Second. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Esberry Park determining that the proposed housing project known as Renaissance Village will address an existing housing need in the city of Esberry Park for home financing for the project.
Moving. Second. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes. I totally agree with you there, yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
We have a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Esberry Park determining that the proposed housing project known as Renaissance Village on Springwood Avenue will address an existing housing need in the city of Esberry Park for HNSA financing for the project.
Moving. Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution of the city of Esberry Park and the county of Monmouth in New Jersey making application to the local finance board pursuant to NJSA 48:3-1.
Moving.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution of the city of Esberry Park, county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey, authorizing compensation payments to Chief Mark Kidman upon his retirement.
Moving.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution, September 2014, proclaim hunger awareness month within the city of Esberry Park.
Moving. Second. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing a person-to-person transfer of a liquor license number 1303-33014004 for premises located at 508 Cookman Avenue.
Before you move this forward, there was a blank in the resolution for the effective date. I clarified and confirmed that that effective date is going to be September 12, 2014.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Have the bill resolution for $988,673.23. I'm sorry, payroll resolution.
Moving.
Second. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing settlement of workers' compensation claims captured Marshawn Love versus the city of Esberry Park.
Moving.
Second. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
I just wanted to abstain because I wasn't part of the process, so I abstain.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing temporary loading zone for small-tops preschool on Grand Avenue between Monroe and Cookman Avenue.
Moving.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Subvention introduction, ordinance amending and supplementing section 4-25 entitled Licensing of Towing Businesses of Chapter IV, General Licensing of the Revised General Ordinance of the City of Esberry Park in New Jersey.
Moving, second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Public hearing, October 1st. Ordinance amending and supplementing chapter 19 entitled Solid Waste Management of the Revised General Ordinance of the City of Esberry Park.
Moving.
Second.
Question. It's the first read. We talked about this with Mr. Kuhn, and he wasn't sure if he was going to leave the language. Now, put the line back in where people can look, like there's no right now, can they? Put threads out, four feet of length, origin diameter, not just 60 pounds. So, if we introduce this, can we make a change in two weeks?
No, no. You can modify it tonight at the table, but if you want to finalize, you can introduce it.
Well, I'll discuss it with Joe. I mean, there's possibility that we'll pull this one the next meeting and have that for the next meeting. So, I would suggest moving this to no harm, no foul, and discussing with him perhaps before it gets published. If we're going to make a little change.
Is that good?
You can introduce it as it was presented in your packages.
And then what?
And then, and then we may pull the one that's introduced to introduce the modified.
Why don't we just wait two weeks and introduce the right ones, if you don't have?
Well, we can, we can do that as well, just maybe two week, two week difference.
But does it matter if there's not a substantial change to the...
Right, that's what we're, leaving language is the substantial change.
You can change the language at the time of second reading, so long as the change doesn't substantially alter the substance.
So, this is a substantial change, so, so, done.
Yeah, I would agree with that, if somebody could modify at second reading. So, you could move forward tonight with ordinance as it was presented in the packets, and then at the time of second reading, it just might.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Public hearing will be held on October 1st.
So, move.
Second. Thank you for coming, let's rock and roll.